Okay, it looks like we've got all the members of the planning board and I've got it at seven o'clock on the dot. So, welcome to the April eighth twenty twenty five Wakefield Planning Board. First order of business is a call to order. Uh, so Matt Lowry.
Present.
Bill Spaulding.
Present.
Kevin York.
Present.
Theo Noel.
Present.
So, all members of the planning board are in attendance. Moving on to item number two, approval of the meeting minutes from the March twenty fifth twenty twenty five. Meeting, have any members of the planning board have any comments on the minutes as uh distributed out prior to this meeting?
I've no comments. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Do I hear a second? Second, motion by Matt, second by Bill. Uh, roll call vote, Kevin.
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Matt?
Yes.
And myself is yes as well. So, the approval of the March twenty fifth twenty twenty five meeting uh meeting minutes is is complete. So, with that, I'll move on to the public hearing for the ADU zoning bylaw amendment. Uh, I understand that Sam Elliott is going to present information regarding this. Uh, as a reminder for everyone, kind of where we are in the process for this public hearing is that our intent is to um hear from Sam regarding the proposed zoning bylaw amendment. Then we'll open up to public comment. And then I anticipate that the planning board will take a vote to recommend at town meeting whether or not the town should either approve or disapprove this proposed amendment. But to be clear, any vote that will be taken today will not mean that this zoning amendment will go into effect. It just means that we're making a recommendation so that people of Wakefield can make that decision at the town meeting. So, with that being said, Sam, I'm more than happy to turn it over to you to present uh regarding the ADU proposed bylaw.
Thank you, Jim. Um, so just as a brief overview for tonight, I'm going to go over what we're proposing for our ADU bylaw here in Wakefield. Um, the state has a lot of parameters set out in the regulations that were released by EO HLC, which is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Um, they uh again gave us a list of regulations um that really helped guide the bylaw. It has been reviewed by um at least in draft form by the Attorney General's Office as well. Um, so they've already given commentary back. So, most of this meets um the minimums and then it provides us with the ability to condition a few additional items. So, I'll go over that really quick. If the slides work, hold on. Okay, um, so what is an ADU? It stands for an accessory dwelling unit. Um, I dropped in the entire definition here. I am not going to read over it. Um, this is up on the web. You can can read back over it. Um, but it's it's essentially a self-contained housing unit that's inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling. It was um made state law, the ADUs had to be allowed by right um in two thousand and twenty four by the Affordable Homes Act, and it technically went into effect on February second twenty twenty five. Um, and the state law over uh overrides any of our local regulations that are in conflict. So, right now, in the process of reviewing the ADU, we have had um numerous meetings uh of the planning board that have reviewed kind of some basics of it. Um, looked at uh specific parameters that we wanted to regulate. Um, we've had some public forums, and now this is the last component prior to going to Springtown meeting, which will be next month in May, less than a month away. Um, and so this is the formal public hearing. So, we are uh soliciting comments and allowing um Jim will be going over the process of of being able to have that communication back and forth. So, for Springtown meeting, the way the um warrant proposal is set up right now is it would remove the existing accessory apartment um because that is in conflict with the state law, and it would replace it with the section on accessory dwelling units. So, the limitation from this state for um uh the parameters of an ADU would be um nine hundred square feet by right. And if somebody would like to increase that, they could do that through a special permit up to twelve hundred square feet. So, it's one thousand two hundred square feet, which is consistent with other accessory structures. Um, that is the maximum size for like barns, garages, sheds, workshops, et cetera, um that's allowed in Wakefield. So, it's consistent with our existing accessory structure um regulations. And it allows one of these protected use accessory dwelling units per principal dwelling unit. Um, so the way that it works is if you have a, whether you have a single-family structure or you have a two-family structure, you're still only allowed one ADU on that lot per principal dwelling unit. And this is permitted by right in all single-family zoning districts, again, that is state language, that have a principal dwelling unit. So, it can be in special single residence, single residence, general residence. Um, my gosh, I always forget what MR is. Um, I think it's a mixed residence and then uh neighborhood business. But again, they have to have a principal dwelling, like a big unit that somebody is living in. So, if it's zoned neighborhood business and it has a um like a single-family or a two-family structure, that would be potentially be eligible. A storefront commercial business building would not be. So, the setbacks, um, we have a little bit of leeway to review, but not much based off of state regulations. So, if it's attached, it needs to meet the underlying zoning setbacks. So, whatever the existing zoning is, if it's detached, it would meet the same accessory setbacks um of existing or what is in the existing code right now. So, in in Wakefield's zoning bylaw, it's seven point five feet for side and rear lot lines um for setbacks. And so, if that gets changed, then in theory, the ADU bylaw would also get updated because again, it's just reflecting um the underlying zoning regulations. So, the big question that everybody has had is is the parking component. I had um wonderful uh one of our wonderful staff members, my colleagues, put up this, put this map together. So, this shows um in the kind of periwinkle purply-blue color. You'll see our train stops. So, we have um all the way at the bottom Melrose Highlands, in the middle, the Greenwood. And then uh at the one, at the topmost one is the Wakefield kind of downtown station off of Albion and Foundry area. Um, these are our train stops. The blue again are the train stops, the green are the bus stops. Any bus or train stop is considered within transit for this half-mile radius zero parking requirement. So, per state regulations, if it's within half a mile from any of these transit locations, there is a zero parking requirement. If it is outside of any of these, um, then one space is required, no more. And if you have parking that's required because you're outside of one of these radii, then a site plan review would be required for that parking component. And a special, but this is um again all by right. So, the only reasons a special permit would be required is if you're seeking relief from any of the basic as-of-right criteria. So, that setbacks, um parking, if you're trying to get rid of that one part, parking spot, if you're outside of the area, um, reducing setbacks or looking to increase over nine hundred square feet, things like that. And it is a special permit would always be required if it's located within a floodplain. One of the big goals of the ADU regulations uh in part, as part of the Affordable Homes Act from the state, is that they're looking to increase the year-round housing. So, what is year-round housing? It's housing that's available year-round versus something that's available as a short-term rental, which is anything that's thirty days or less. Currently, many people call them like Airbnb or VBR, those are brand names of companies that you can do a short or list a short-term rental on. Um, that's kind of just the the basic uh premise of it is anything that's thirty days or less. So, currently in Wakefield, they are not regulated. They are permitted in the gray area because that that's the decision CBA has made most recently because they're not explicitly prohibited. So, under the ADU bylaw, any parcel that has an ADU on it, neither the single-family or the neither that primary structure nor the um ADU can be utilized for short-term rentals. The goal of this again is to provide year-round housing is one of the concerns that we have in the public. So, this is uh the best way for us to be able to address that. So, those are the the big basics of what's included in our bylaw. It's relatively short. Um, we tried to make it navigable for most people. Um, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those right now.
Yeah, thank you, Sam, for that presentation. Um, before we open it up to the public, do any members of the planning board have any questions, comments that they would like to bring up uh prior to me opening up to the public? Seeing none, uh, I'll turn it over and we can open up for any comments of any members of the public. Uh, if you wish to make any comments or have any questions for Sam, feel free to hit the raise hand button on the Zoom. Uh, as a reminder, if you do choose to participate, that uh we will ask you to turn a camera on if you have the ability to do so, as well as state your name and your address uh before starting comment. So, with that, any members of the public have any questions, concerns, or comments they'd like to bring forth to the to Sam or the members of the board? Uh, I see Attorney McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Um, Brian McGrath, eighty-one Outlook Road in Wakefield. Um, I support this bylaw. I think it's uh well done. Um, I think uh a lot of time has gone into it uh by staff and board, and that's very much appreciated. It's been a very public process, which is appreciated also. Um, I think um there are there are a couple of things that I'd like to point out that I think should be um edited and considered by the board um going forward, which you have the power to do before it goes to town meeting under state law. If I could share my screen, I can be specific in that regard.
Uh, yes.
And one of these is really just kind of technical, just kind of some housekeeping on it? Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I've highlighted in yellow the term protected use ADU. Um, and it's used again here. And then this is the definition section that we're looking at. So, I defines it, it's called a protected use accessory dwelling unit, a P A D U. And what happens is you go through this, we just use different terms. We're defining it as a term in I, and we should be consistent in the bylaw in doing that. So, there's nothing called the protected use ADU. There's something called the protected use accessory dwelling unit. Um, but this is
See what you're saying. I see what you're saying. It's just a language issue.
It's not a big deal. And and I reviewed this a number of times, and I just never noticed it until now. So, I I feel bad that in earlier process I didn't comment, but it's just a cleanup. So, I think Sam sees what I'm saying. So, here it here we use the correct term, and then sometimes we we refer to it
So, it's it's either needs to be the full thing or P A D U.
Hundred percent.
I get you. I get you.
Not substantive at all, just kind of consistency and and just a cleanup, that's all. Um, but more, um, I think that is a little bit substantive. Um, there's a definition I've highlighted and read. It's a prohibitive regulation it's called, and and if you look at this, it says zoning or general ordinances of bylaws and municipal regulations that are prohibited pursuant to the CMR. This is taken out, this is taken out of the sta- out of the regulations or the statute, and I respectfully suggest it doesn't have a place in the bylaw. Uh, because this is telling you as a town what you can't have in your bylaw. Um, so it doesn't need to be in here, and the only time it's referred to um is used is in three C. And this is where I I really have a strong point. Um, I'm passionate about this. There um this, there are a lot of people in this town that have spent significant money permitting and building current accessory apartments under the old bylaw that are now part of their houses that they have family members living in, huge financial investments. Um, they've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars doing this, and they end. There was a provision in our role bylaw, as you know, that it had to be a family member, special permit process. And one of the things that I feel very um is very important through this process, you you have to remember, we're wiping out that bylaw. It's gone. So, those units and those investments are extremely vulnerable, and I think as a town, we have to be really careful to protect them. Um, and so this language, what I'm what I'm proposing here is I highlighted that just as an example before. But if it if you read through this, what this does is, in essence, it grandfathers those units and makes them protected ADUs. So, what I've highlighted and read, I think, has to come out. And and if you read through this, it says accessory apartments of any size previously allowed pursuant to a special permit indoor variance granted by the zoning board of appeals shall be deemed a protected use ADU, which is great hereunder, and shall not be subject to any conditions stated in said special permit or variance. And then we have this language that conflict with the bylaw. We don't need that. They're just not, they're now protected ADUs. What's very critical here is we can't, we can't um blemish the titles of these properties. When people go to sell them, it's got to be very clear that these units are now allowed by right, notwithstanding anything that was in any special permit or variance that once allowed them. Otherwise, lawyers at closings are going to say, geez, I have to, how do I know that it doesn't conflict with anything in the bylaw? And it's going to cause a real cloud on people's titles. So, I would take that out. So, it should just say indoor variance, including but not limited to owner occupancy, number of tenants, family tenancy, and parking spaces. And then furthermore, any restrictive covenant, and it says conditions, well, covenants don't have conditions, they have requirements. And in um recorded and middlesex self-registered deeds related to said accessory apartment, and this is where that definition come in comes in, that contains a prohibited re- regulation is defined herein. You don't need that. It just, again, it just confuses things for people. And it's going to confuse people when they're trying to, attorneys when they're trying to sell the house. So, it should just say related to said accessory apartment shall be deemed null and void and have no further force in effect. So, basically, what it's, what what you want this to say is clearly and concisely, without any required interpretation, research. If somebody got a special permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit, which under the old bylaw required a restrictive covenant that said if it changed ownership, it was wiped out because that's what it said. You need to get rid of that and say in this that those apartments that were previous permitted no matter, are now protected ADUs under this new section. Without any require for analysis, research, interpretation, this thing that contains a prohibitive regulation, it's referring to a statute, it's just it, it's extremely confusing, it's not required. So, I would just, I'm respectfully suggesting to edit this as I proposed here, to take out what's red highlighted and 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 just include that. I think it's going to be very clear and concise and very important to these people that made these investments that will keep their properties marketable uh without question or interpretation. Besides that, I think I think everything in here is is well done, and that and that's my comment for consideration.
Thank you for that, Attorney McGrath. I think from a process perspective, correct me if I'm wrong, the warrant language is finalized at this point, right? So, if if any, I I'm assuming cleaning up the the protected use ADU or or PDU uh acronym usage is is considered de minimis and could be done without further action. But the the changes you're talking about as it relates to those those, that language coming out that you highlighted and read, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would have to be done via a floor amendment?
Correct. It would need to be done during uh uh through a floor amendment, any changes herein. Um, and it has been um confirmed, yeah, when I talked to uh Mr. Mull in the town council.
Well, I would, I would, I I respectfully disagree because the the planning board, I'm reading from one of my treatises, this planning board has some leeway in changing text to propose amendments after its hearing. After all, quote, "The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain public sentiment so that the proper revision can be made." The leading case is the case at Town of Burlington v. Dunn, and after the hearing on the delineation of the zoning district, the board was able to amend it. So, you do have leeway, um, as long as you're not changing the substantive aspect of what's being proposed, and you're certainly not doing that here. You're just clarifying it, as I stated. So, I, what you would do is you would, you would, this would be part of your motion at town meeting, but you do have the leeway to make a recommendation uh to change that text. And I think you could also change it in your warrant language if you wanted to because the warrant has not been published yet. If if you deem that, if you deem this change to be appropriate, certainly that's your decision in making the recommendation. Um, having a lot of experience, um, representing a lot of people on those accessory apartment special permits, I have no skin in the game except to protect their interests, my former clients. And I think that they are really in jeopardy with this language uh because it creates confusion and circumspect.
Um, well, thank you for that, for that uh Attorney McGrath. Uh, I see um board member Theo Knowles raise your hand. Um, I'd like to recognize you.
Yeah, just real quick, this this is really sort of uh um, Mr. Attorney McGrath, can you increase the res- like the magnification? I think that might help uh the the audience. Um, and yeah, I'm I'm still a little unclear. Um, how the, I mean, how by not making this edit, uh, it puts it puts the, it put those those units at right. I it, um, so, you know, there's 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 sort of a fine language thing in terms of this grandfathering that um I guess I'm not getting. But I'll I'll leave it there and I'll let the other folks ask their questions and maybe get get a little more clarity.
Okay. Um, Mr., I see uh David Hatfield has raised your hand, uh, member of the public.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Dave Hatfield, twenty-three Butter Nut Road. Um, and member of the zoning board of appeals, yeah. Um, thank you um um for um hearing me tonight. Thank you, Samantha, for the uh updates to uh the bylaw, uh proposed bylaw change uh since our last uh zoning board hearing um when this was presented to us. Um, and I do remember this coming up at that time. We wanted to, you know, tighten up the language, we wanted to ensure the definitions were clear, and I think Attorney McGrath's point about the um the um protected ADU, just clarifying that is is a valid one. But this one too, you know, you know, I would defer to him from his legal expertise, but yeah, we, it came up during our hearing, you know, we wanted to make sure those existing units were protected, and and I think it's just important that the language of this bylaw does that without adding any sort of confusion. So, um, I I would, I would second his recommendations to um make these changes. Um, and and not allow them to come up on the floor. I just think once we get to town meeting, these kinds of things just, you know, are hard for a lot of the folks on the floor to you know, interpret and 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 digest at that time. This this has to be something that the board recommends wholly tonight or when it's finalized for town meeting. Um, so, so I I think these changes are are um reasonable. And um I would, I would argue that um and and ask that you consider them um as part of this hearing that they be done prior to town meeting. Um, so I will leave it at that, and I appreciate the the time and effort that went into getting us to this point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I see uh Stacy Constas.
Thank you, Jim. I just want to uh also thank the group for the hard work that's gone into this proposal and let you all know I'm running for town council. I don't have any
Sorry, um, uh, before you can continue, can you just make sure you state your address?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Stacy Constas, twenty-five Wave Ave. Um, I'm running for town council. I don't have any opposition, so barring something super strange, I expect to be elected on April twenty-second, and I want to be clear with the group that I am a very strong supporter of of these regulations, these changes, and the adoption of the re- um revised bylaws. So, anything that I can do from the town council perspective to support and move this forward, I just wanted the group to know that um that you very much have my support. So, uh, that's really all I wanted to convey at this moment. So, but and thank you for all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you very much and good luck uh at the end, election day. Um, with that being said, any other members of the public wish to have any other comment?
Mr. Chair, can I just provide a clarification on this just quickly?
Uh, yes, please.
So, I just want you to focus on the term. So, it says restrictive covenant conditions recorded related to said that contain, so restrictive covenant that contains a prohibitive regulation. And this is where it doesn't make sense. You got to look at the definition of prohibitive regulation. A prohibitive regulation is a zoning or general ordinance of bylaw or municipal regulation. A restrictive covenant that was put on by the zoning board doesn't contain a zoning ordinance or municipal regulation. So, with all due respect, it just doesn't make any sense. It just creates confusion, and that's that's my point.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to open it up to to hear other members of the planning board, and if anyone else has any other comments that they would like to have as it relates to the ADU amendment in in general or the specific uh request from Attorney McGrath for us to consider as well. Um, I see uh s- um, town planner Samantha Elliott has raised your hand.
Yeah, Mr. McGrath, if you could just uh email me your comments, um, so I have a copy of them for the record. I, that's all I just wanted to to share. I can address them later uh after comments.
Sure. Be happy to.
Okay, uh, any other members of the planning board have comments that they would like to to uh to give?
Yeah, Jim, I'd like to um find out more about what, was it Tom Mullin, town council, that recommended that this change happens? Um, at town meeting on the floor? Or I I just want to understand that comment better. Sam, was this a conversation that you had with?
Yeah, through the chair, um, Mr. Spalding, to answer your questions, I had spoken with Tom um earlier this week just to confirm if there are any changes at all, can they move forward, um, can they be edited, or do they need to come as a floor amendment? He said any changes at this point have to come as a floor amendment, um, unless it's like a very small typo. Um, they would need to to be uh addressed at town meeting itself as a floor amendment. Um, although I'll, excuse me, I also um have had this reviewed again, worked with Tom on all the language as well as with um the Attorney General's Office, who has already reviewed the draft um and and given us a no, really very minimal comments back.
Okay, so that that makes more sense. So, if we are um recommended not to change this um here, should our, and this is probably more for you, Jim, should our board prepare when this is presented at town meeting, prepare with this language that Attorney McGrath just shared? Um, it's been a while since I think as a board we recommended and then also added a comment about changing it. I, in fact, Matt, I'm trying to think. I don't think we actually recommended and made the change on the the warrant on the floor um with an amendment, but somebody else from the public did.
Yeah, we were, we were favorable to floor amendments that other people made.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, yeah, I mean, we could do that. I would like uh just, Mr. Chair, through you, uh, Sam, did this specific issue, was this discussed with Tom Mullin, or did you just generally discuss any changes that are made?
We discussed any changes that were made, and we also worked together on putting the whole bylaw together, making sure that it reflected the state regulations and all of the concerns that they had. Um, so, we've gone back and forth on this a number, I mean, the whole, the bylaw as a whole a number of times before it ever made its way out as a draft to be commented on, um, let alone being prepared for the warrant. Um, so at this point, again, when I was talking with any comments um that come back either from the planning board public hearing or from the Attorney General's Office, this was just like right before, um, and then again, we talked about it later. How would we address any of those changes since it has been submitted to the warrant? And he said they would, any changes at all at this point, again, aside from a very basic typo, would be going to town meeting as a floor amendment.
Does that answer your question, Matt?
Um, somewhat, I I I believe, I think if if the board as a whole um requests that this specific issue be looked at by Tom Mullin, um, I don't think that would be out of bounds and just say um a- as Attorney McGrath pointed out, is it possible for us to change the language on this small item, or should it definitely be a floor amendment? Uh, either way, I would be favorable to um Uh, either way, I would be favorable to, um. To making this change, because I, I do understand how little words, a prohibited. Um, regulation, someone could read this a pro- prohibitive regulation within the covenant. And that does tie things up, and I have been, I have been stuck on, on. Some projects where these little tiny things really do. Um, drag things down, and it, in truth, like, it doesn't take much. To have a few lawyers start commenting on it, and suddenly you, you know, you, you run up the bill on something that really doesn't need to be done, so. I would be in favor of getting this as clean as possible, and Attorney McGrell has worked with a lot of. Owners in town. To construct units that are larger than what is allowed now, so I would wanna make sure that they are protected and there's not. Um, issues going forward.
Um, I think, uh, Mr. Hatfield, you raise your hand again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, um. Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, again, timing wise, if technically the deadline for. Warren article submissions was prior to this meeting, then it's unfortunate. That we've had, you know, the zoning bylaws have to go through the Planning Board for public hearing. But other than de minimis quote-unquote changes, they, no changes can be made at this time that. It's unfortunate, it probably should have come sooner, is, you know. Because this is where things get worked out in public as an opportunity to make comments and have questions and make changes. And then maybe something is finalized and updated, other than just one meeting. And then a recommendation can be made by the Planning Board on a final warrant article that then gets published. It seems like maybe we're just, you know, a little late at this, and. I, you know. So, yeah, we can go forward and ask, you know, you know. Mr. Mullen, if, if any changes like this can be made, or they have to be made at the floor, I just know that they're, that, you know. It's gonna be hard to do it that night. So potentially, we, we go forward with something the board recommends, favorable action or not, at your discretion. And at town meeting, something gets voted on. And potentially, and, you know, maybe substantive changes or other changes come later at a, another town meeting. To clean things up, um. But I just know that, you know, the, the, the building department. Having no bylaw and a state statute that already went into effect is a problem, so we gotta get something there. But it just seems like the timing of all this is unfortunate, that. We can't make these kinds of changes when it was brought before a public hearing. In your board, so. I, anyway, I'll, I'll lower my hand, I'm done for now, I just wanted to bring that out as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and, and I appreciate that, and you know, I think just for everyone's awareness, right, we, we're all trying to work. And getting something based on a quick turnaround time from the state, and we did have a number of meetings prior to. A public forum that, as Sam mentioned, occurred in March, that we were trying to flush all these out, and it looks like there's just one bit of language that. Didn't get caught through that process, which is, to your point, unfortunate, but I think we could. To your point, have the conversation with Attorney Mullen and see if we can get that made to miss change, and then. Uh, see if other members of the Planning Board, um, what they wanna do as it relates to the, the recommendation on the floor. Um.
I, I, I think it's reasonable, sorry, just to interject. It, it doesn't change the substance of the bylaw itself, right, there's a lot of language here, there's a lot that is, is. Inconsistent with the state statute, right, these are changes that just. Make it clear, tighten it up, and I, I think we would all agree reasonably that this just makes it. Better going forward, uh, to adopt as a entire change to that bylaw, so. Let's, let's hopefully we can do that, and not have to carry it on to a future town meeting, I hope, so.
I agree, yeah. Uh, I'd like to recognize, uh, Sam again.
Yeah, um, just as a quick thing to add on, Mr. Hogan, to what you, you noted, um, we've had at least two public forums, we've had this advertised since. I wanna say at least October, um, I've been working very intently, um. To try to make sure that everybody has enough comment, we've shared it on social media, that we had forums, um, so I, I do know, I. Understand that people still would have liked more time, we would have liked more time too, we only had. So much time from when the state, uh, released regulations, and even though they had final regulations, um, they literally came out. Three different times, I have three different copies of them at this point, and they say three different things, so it's been a moving target, um. I am appreciative of all the work the Planning Board and other boards have put into this, department heads, um, and, and the like. Um, that said, I, from the email from Mr. Mullen. Um, when I had talked to him about this earlier, there's either. A floor amendment, you can also incorporate changes into your motion, um, saying that you're effectively, that your. Recommendation for approval is contingent upon this, um. You know, X, Y, Z criteria, conditions, et cetera, um, those are your avenues for being able to. Recom- make a recommendation. With meeting some amendments or, or alterations to the, the bylaw that you're reviewing, um, the biggest concern. I would have in this particular section is just trying to make sure. That, um, as Mr. McGrell had pointed out, that the criteria. Of, um, previous ADUs aren't yet definitely not impacted, as he had mentioned, some of them are over twelve hundred square feet. Um, but that also, we are very explicitly not having any issues with. Um, conflicting with the state regulations, so. However you end up wording it, just wanna make sure, we don't have any conflicts.
Yep, before we keep going, uh, I would like to see, uh, Kevin and or Theo, if either of you have any additional, um. Thoughts on. The, the warrant article as presented in front of us.
I'm supportive of what Matt recommended to specifically ask Counselor Mullen. About these changes to see if they're changes of substance versus clarity changes, um. Which is what I. What, what Attorney McGrell had, had mentioned earlier is, is what I've heard from, um, Attorney Bobrowski as well on, on Bylaw Review Committee, where if it's not a change of substance. You could make a change between the hearing and town meeting. Um, so just to get total clarity on that, if, if we have to move forward without changing it and, and figure it out, an alternative route. Uh, then we have to do that, but I think it's worth checking.
I, I would concur, I, I think we, uh, we all support and agree that. Any prior ADU needs to be grandfathered in, and, uh, um, and these restrictive covenants that, no. Um. Uh, don't, don't pass muster anymore, should be, uh, uh, with, um. Released, um, so that, to the extent that this creates, creates that cloud, then, then we would wanna, wanna get it removed, and so. Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, with Kevin and, and Matt and the rest of the board that, um. Make, making sure, determining whether or not this is, uh. A, a simple clarification that we can make or not, um.
So in that case, first, to the, to the other members of the board, it sounds like we all have kinda conceptually. We all agree about the end goal, is they get these changes incorporated. So then I guess the question is that, would, would we want to consider a motion to make a favorable recommendation? Conditioned on those changes, or favorable recommendation, um. Based, and then have like a separate motion to request to, uh, Counselor Mullen to. For lack of a better term, adjudicate whether or not those can be made without additional changes?
Um, Jim, I would suggest that we just keep the matter to, um, recommending. Or not recommending the bylaw that's in front of us. And, um. We, I don't think we have to. Vote or do anything again to have this language put in front of Tom Mullen, Town Council for, to review, but we don't have another. We don't have, what do we have, one more, we don't have another Planning Board meeting before. Town meeting, because of town elections, correct?
Correct.
That is correct, okay.
There's, there's not one scheduled, but if, we can always schedule another one, so, like, it's. It's do or die, I mean. Getting, getting a clean. Uh. Article in the first time would be easier in the long run.
I agree. So looking, so if we want to first. Vote to recommend or not recommend favorable action. But do we want to look at a calendar to see if? Um.
Probably, things of the twenty-ninth would be the most likely day to have an alternate. Planning Board meeting, if we were interested in having a meeting between now and town meeting.
Sorry, I'm sorry, could you repeat that date?
Tuesday, to the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, the, the intent would be to, um, ask Attorney Mullen if. He had, if, if these are considered de minimis such that we could have those changes made. If not, then have an alternate meeting on the twenty-ninth to make a separate motion?
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think tonight we need to vote on this to recommend or not recommend. That way, if Town Council says no, you can't make any changes, then we don't have to have a meeting to go through this. And it will just go to town meeting and. Can happen on the floor. I, I, that's how I see it.
Well, again, if we're gonna have another meeting, we don't need to do favorable action tonight. Because favorable action needs to come at town meeting, it's not like, we could give a report ahead of time, but usually, our report is. At town meeting, so if we wanna, if we wanna ask Attorney Mullen if. It can be revised and not cause an issue, or if it needs to be a floor amendment. We could hold off, and then if we're gonna have, if there's gonna be a meeting on the twenty-ninth, then you can decide whether to do favorable action. Not changing it, or favorable action with a floor amendment.
The only thing is, I don't know if we can do that, because. Actually, no, we do have enough time, right, because we've got the, we've got three weeks, so we could have a hosting, because that'd have to be a public meeting, right?
Yes, we do have enough time.
Yep.
You don't have to re-advertise the public hearing, you would just not, I mean, you would just continue it, that's what you've done with other.
That's right.
Carriages, we don't have to notice it, it could be, I mean, it can't be the week of elections, but technically, you could even have it next week if you wanted to. On the fifteenth, not, not trying to throw a wrench in it, I'm just saying, you can continue it.
And we can close public hearing and then decide how we want to. If we wanna re- re- favorably recommend it later, so the public, yeah, the public hearing can be closed tonight. As long as we don't hear anything else from anyone, we can close it, not make a decision, and then at our next, at the next meeting. Then decide whether to favorably recommend as provided, favorably recommend with de minimis changes. Or favorably recommend, but with a floor amendment.
So in that case, uh, for other members of the Planning Board, um, between, I guess the, the two options would be the fifteenth to the twenty-ninth. Um, do anyone have any particular? Strong feelings one way or the other, if, if that is people, something people are, um, willing and able to do?
Either one works for me, both of them.
Yeah, either, either day is fine.
Um, well, I would suggest the fifteenth, because that would have the current board members all possibly in attendance. And on the twenty-ninth, um, it's not going to be the same.
And I would recommend a later one.
Well, Mr. Lowery.
Um, so I think, and I, I just saw, uh, uh, Mr. Renault. Uh, just raised your hand as we've been going on back and forth, um, wanna hear what you, you have to say.
I, I just wanna make sure, there, is there a timeframe that you have to have? Your hearing close by prior to town meeting or whatever dialogue you're having? Ryan, do you know, you probably know that?
It's, it's before town meeting.
I actually know the answer to that, because I asked, it can literally be. Minutes before, it just has to be before town meeting gets opened, like formally opened.
Well, I learned something new today, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So, and then, so I think, I think, um, Attorney McGrell, and I know you've had your hand up for a while, I'd like to give you the opportunity, as you've been hearing us go back and forth. On this.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I think, I'm very confident the answer you're gonna get from Tom Mullen is this can be done, and Samantha mentioned it can be done as part of the motion. So it doesn't have to be a floor amendment, you would just put on the screen what your motion is based on your hearing. You know, it would have the revised language, and it could clean up all the other stuff that I had talked about too, and that would be what is presented at a town meeting. To vote on, uh, but you have, you do, I am very, I, I participated in, I, I, we've done it at a town meeting before. So, um, I know that that can happen, I'm, I'm confident that Tom will say that, and, and Samantha alluded to that as part of her. Uh, conversation with Tom. Um, I would also respectfully suggest that you don't close the public hearing tonight, because that would forego you getting advice from Town Council. Because once you close the pu- the public hearing, you can't, you can't hear from anybody at that point.
So, in that case, uh, unless others disagree, what I would propose is that I would propose that we. Uh, make a motion to continue this public hearing until April fifteenth, and then make sure that we're, um, we're. Doing everything by the book, and then we would, uh, have a vote anticipated on the fifteenth, and then have one more meeting.
I like that option as well, thank you, Jim.
Any member of the board like to? To make a motion in that case?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, continue the, of the public hearing rega- regarding, uh. Protect, protecting your accessory dwelling units, uh, to April fifteenth.
Uh, motion by Theo, do I hear a second?
Second.
So, motion to, uh, continue this public hearing until a, uh, Planning Board meeting on April fifteenth, uh, Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Uh. Bill?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well, so, this, uh, this is, uh, continued until the April, and, uh, April fifteenth meeting. Wakefield Planning Board. Uh, so with that, I would like to move, close item number four. And move on to item number five, the floodplain overlay district. Uh, so I believe that this one is going to be presented by Mr. Renault.
Sure, so, um, hey folks, uh, Bill Renault, town engineer, um, so, I can share my screen, um. The Farm Street alteration being proposed, if I can jump into that. Um, so as part of the, um, the high school reconstruction project, um, the traffic advisory committee looked at the entrances, um. Proposed within the new layout of, um, of the high school. As part of that, they had proposed the, um, installation of a new roundabout to tee up the intersections between the hot and hemlock. And also provide some traffic calming for folks coming down Farm Street, um, into town from, from Salem, I'm from Salem, from, um. Uh, Saugus. Uh, to facilitate that, we need to make some right-of-way modifications, so this essentially goes through the same process. That we would for an acceptance of a roadway, um, we are alternate, we are making an alteration to. An existing public right-of-way, uh, so that's what's proposed here, so parcel A. Uh, shows the new right-of-way layout, um, that would be proposed to facilitate the, um, the new roundabout to be installed. Um, aside from that, we have, um, an easement as well. That's being proposed, um, this little triangle piece that would allow the other leg of this, uh, roundabout. To tie into the Hemlock Road easement, so Hemlock Road actually isn't a road, it's, uh, easement, uh, to DCR over town property. Um, all the land that is, uh, gonna be involved in this, uh, new right-of-way layout is all town land. Uh, so we won't be needing takings or anything to that effect, but pretty straightforward, um, similar to what I typically come before you folks for. Um, I think the last one we did would have been Flanders Lane, maybe three or four years ago. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Renault, um, before I open up to other members of the board of the public, um, can you just clarify? This is, uh, granting an easement from which entity to which entity?
So the triangle easement that's down in this area, from my curfew service. That is, uh, we are granting it from the town to DCR. And we're not abandoning the other portion of the DCR easement, just because of the, um, the timeframe that that would take to happen, um, at the state level. And we're not abandoning the other portion of the DCR easement, just because of the um the timeframe that that would take to happen um at the stable. So that was Attorney Mullins' recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Um with that, I'd like to open up to any members of the planning board who have any questions or comments. And sorry, one other question from a procedural. We, this is again, we're voting on. A recommendation for favorable or unfavorable action, and then again, town meeting will be ultimately where it's ju- adjudicated by the townsfolk.
Yeah, so so the process is that the select or the select, the town council, when they receive a um um a request. To lay out, they refer this to you folks. Uh prior to town meeting, you provide a report, that's your recommendation. Um and then what they will do is they'll have a public hearing held. Um at at least seven days prior to town meeting to lay out the official way, so that will happen as a separate hearing at the um at the town council. Um in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, thank you. Uh any members of the planning board have any questions or comments? Uh Mister Lowery, if you're talking, it looks like uh you're unmuted.
Alright, uh is that better?
Yes.
Um so this plan that we're looking at now, this parcel plan here, this is. This is a taking of this parcel and it's gonna be transferred to the town? So it's taking from the town, transferring?
Yeah, so so the way Tom wrote the article, where he wants to do it was, um it's essentially a change in the use type, so. Um moving, changing it from school purposes to uh road purposes. That's essentially what's happening.
Okay, and this is gonna be signed by the town council?
So town council does the layout, so typical to like a a typical acceptance that we do for subdivision, same process. So, you know, they they received the the petition to have um to have this change that happened from me. Um is referred to you folks for your report, then it goes back to them to lay it official officially lay it out. And then town meeting votes on it to accept it through a two thirds vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other members of the board?
Yeah, Jim, I have a comment, um just thinking about uh. Uh Mister Renault, can you jump to the um proposed plan? So has this plan been like bit, obviously it it's been through your department. But has it also gone to the fire department and police department, traffic advisory, all that?
All of that, yeah, and it was included as part of the application um uh for the for the uh ZBI as well. This is all part of. This has all been taken care of two, three years ago at this point.
That yeah, I I think back, I remember going to one of the meetings when this was proposed. Um with the change, is there any type of traffic or street calming devices as part of this?
Well, the roundabout itself will act as as some traffic calming, um you know, because right now, you know, we have essentially folks flying down Farm Street from Saugus. Because of the hill, this slows everybody down as they get, you know, to the to the splitter island and then to the roundabout. The roundabout also increases the traffic capacity significantly through here, so that 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 reduces queues in each direction. Um to get folks in and out of the uh out of the high school. So this was vetted. Over two or three meetings, I want to say, at the traffic advisory committee back in twenty twenty one.
And just one more question about the traffic side of it. Southbound on Farm Street, so coming uh from in front of the school, southbound. Is that two lanes or is that one lane?
So you're staying in front of the school?
So Farm Street going southbound towards the rotary?
Yep.
Is that two lanes or one lane? Because currently, like both those lanes are like two lanes. I was curious if, is it going down to one lane?
I mean, technically they're one lane, um but the widths are the same. So if you look at the approaches, really, we're not changing the widths of what's already there.
Okay, those are just the questions I had, because I I remember the meeting, it was just a long time ago.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Definitely definitely was.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else from any other members of the planning board?
Uh just real quick on the other view. The other sheet. So parcel A and the little triangle under it, those would both become part of the street then, right?
So parcel A becomes part of the Farm Street right of way, and then this triangle becomes an easement to DCR, kind of see it through here. Darkened up. So this will be an easement expansion. Right now they have this dashed area, that's all the Hemlock Road. You wanna call it Hemlock Road, um DCR easement, so it's an easement for righto- for right of way purposes to get to the school. And then our off ramp essentially from the that this leg of the of the roundabout is gonna be skewed. Um so this allows that to tie into Hemlock Road. So we'll reconstruct Hemlock Road so folks can still get and get up to the to the book.
Okay, so parcel A will be the gradual Hemlock Road into Farm Street?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, and we didn't, you know, like I was saying earlier, it's a lot easier for the state to accept an easement as opposed to remove it, so. Um in discussing this with with Tom, um his recommendation was to leave it as is. We'll expand it, and then if the future we ever need to change this for some reason, uh we would be able to do that in the future.
I have a, I have another question, um going back to the the layout with the rotary in there. Um and just kinda tagging on what Bill was saying. Can you tell me where parking would start and end on this? Is has that been contemplated about? Where cars are gonna park? Because at some point, these are gonna be playing fields and you're gonna have a lot of people out there trying to park, so. Has that been looked?
I don't know, I don't know if I'm following your question. You mean on site?
On the roadway itself.
Oh, on the roadway, so so we're keeping the the same width that we have, so nothing's changing on the width approaching it. So in front of, you know, the the ballfields, but what will be the ballfields will have the same width that we have on the road today. There are parking locks that are gonna be designed, um obviously in in different sections within the site. I mean, that that is all contemplating.
So same with for the travel lane, meaning there would be room for parking? Because right now. There there is, there is room for parking on some of this, and people do park there.
Yep, and so again, we're not really, we're not changing as we approach in, so the the it's really where the roundabout is itself. That's that's where we have, you know, the the island, that's what will reduce the width of the um of the travel lane.
Okay, so when people do start parking out there, has any thought been put into of? Where they're gonna start parking and end parking and not have an issue where people literally parking in the rotary?
Uh I mean, we, I mean, we would sign that if need be. I don't know if we, if without looking at this, I I pulled up just this plan, but. Um the sign plan, you know, uh obviously we're not gonna allow people to park within the the roundabout, so. That that, you know, if we have to sign that uh accordingly, we would. But, you know, fire, uh police and fire obviously weigh in on that that stuff. Anything that would be an issue would come to the traffic advisory committee, like. Every traffic issue in town, and we would make a modification as needed, make a recommendation to the town council.
Alright, well, my suggestion is um the traffic engineers that designed this would would have a an idea of. Where parking should, you know, should be allowed and shouldn't be allowed. And it's probably should be incorporated, because if it's not signed, I guarantee people will be parking there.
Well, keep in mind, there have been some signs and some issues that have happened over the last year too, where there was some pa- no parking signs that were added to a side, and. So there's been a history of other pieces of this. I mean, I I really am prepared to talk about the right of way itself and this modification to the right of way. Not the parking further down the road, um I didn't expect that to come up, but um. You know, tho- there have been issues at the traffic advisory committee discussing all of that. There's an, you know, we have more parking as part of this. Um of the of this high school as well, so there's an increase in parking um significantly. I know that the school is actually looking at potentially making a modification to the site plan. I'm looking at another. Um another spot uh for parking, um that will be a meeting in the upcoming um. Upcoming months as well. So there's there's definitely thoughts around parking.
I a- and I understand that. What I'm trying to get at is. Um some traffic engineers have designed this, and I I would assume that they have. In their plans where the sight lines should be. And listening to them on the front end instead of trying things out later and having the traffic advisory add. Signs at some point, my suggestion is make sure. Use the proper engineering on the front end and and have it set going into this. That's all.
Yep, makes sense.
Okay, uh so I'll open up to any members of the public who wanna have have any questions or concerns. Uh I see Julie, as a reminder, please turn your camera, say your name and your address before starting to talk.
Okay, just uh getting situated here. Can you hear me and can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, Julie Scott, Main Street. I have a question for Bill. I've been watching the permanent building committee meetings. And they have spent a boatload of money on a study. To convert the temporary parking lot H into a permanent parking lot, even though. This ties in to the previous speaker, the traffic advisory committee only agreed to that parking lot if it was permanent. And I don't know, I I'm on my phone.
You mean not temporary?
Temporary, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely temporary. Um I'm not quite sure why they're spending almost sixty thousand dollars on a study where they've already been told it's not a good idea. I can't see, I'm on my phone. Do you have that parking lot on this map?
I don't, I I haven't seen a- any plans for that at this point. Uh they've they've contacted me to schedule a meeting with with the chair and myself. Uh about bringing it forward to the traffic advisory committee, but aside from that, I haven't seen anything, and they haven't sent me a plan.
Does it ties in?
One thing I would, I would like to make sure that we're very clear. This is to talk about the right of way easement and transfer of land, not related to the parking lot? That's a separate issue, so I don't wanna start talking about or getting off track.
All I wanted to point out was, it it adds more of an issue to what the previous speaker was talking about. It's the right hand not knowing what the left hand is is doing. So I just wanted to point that out, and uh if Bill, you could bring that back to that meeting, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, uh anything else that any other members of the public would like to? To provide comments on? Uh seeing none, then I'll open up to any other members of the planning board who wanna have any discussion as it relates to. Potentially making a motion regarding this item.
One last quick question, just out of curiosity, Hemlock Road is a DCR easement. Who's responsible for maintenance of that then? Is it DCR?
Yep, state, state owns responsibility for it.
Okay, any other members of the planning board wanna say anything and or make a motion?
Um Mister Chair, I'll make a motion that we recommend favorable action.
Okay, motion by Theo, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Theo, seconded by Matt to make a favorable recommendation, uh Kevin York?
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Matt Lowery?
Yes.
Theo Noel?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well. So planning board has voted to make a favorable recommendation on the proposed. Easement and right of way change changes. With that, I will close item number four and go to item number five. The public hearing associated with the floodplain overlay district. Uh Mister Renault, I believe this is also you is right.
Yeah, you get me again. Again, Bill Renault, town engineer, um so this is a proposal for a modification to our current. Uh floodplain overlay district bylaw, um so. Back in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, somewhere in that range, the um. The folks at FEMA did a a regional study that looked at um a bunch of things. Ma- one of the main ones. Was um a flood study for the Middlesex County, Essex County, a whole slew of the counties in in Massachusetts. Um all of that work um looked at uh essentially like hy- uh hydraulic and and um and hydrological analysis is. Uh to determine limits of the floodplain um throughout the um throughout the county. Uh for Wakefield, we were notified um in January that the maps are finalized. And we need to adopt them by July eighth to stay within the um the um. The flood insurance program, uh which many of our residents are in. Uh so to facilitate that, we've made some modifications to the bylaw. Um as part of the changes, FEMA has mandated us to make a series of changes that were included within draft that was sent before you folks. Um aside from that, um basically, the only substantive change was on applications. And the process of the application is the only thing I really modified. Everything else is mandated language from um from FEMA. So um looking at the actual um FEMA maps, let's pull that up.
And while you're pulling that map up. There now, was there in terms of um specific, and I can actually pull it up for you if if that's.
That would be easier if you have it.
Can you, can you see it?
That's it, there we go, yeah. So we don't currently have a floodplain overlay district map, so we did, you know, I wanna say fifteen, twenty years ago. Um and typically that would be modified as the um, you know, as the FEMA maps are updated. Um last one we had as an update would have been in twenty ten. Um so this recreates that map based on the limits from um from the current study. Um for the majority of what we're seeing within town, um our flood zones actually shrunk uh based on the modeling that was done. Um so we have less um impacts within uh within the town from what was originally there. So folks aren't really gonna see much of an increase, um so you know, what we're doing is we're gonna have. Some notifications that will go out um to, you know, through through our news and notices. Uh so folks can see maps and compare for their own lots, and then reach out to me as needed. That will probably be going out later this week as a. As a website uh for folks to get on and and hit me up with questions. But for the most part, it's pretty straightforward, mandated to stay within the flood insurance program, um which is very important to a lot of folks.
Any members of the planning board have any questions, comments? Bill?
Um thank you for the presentation. I do understand that it's shrunk, which I'm surprised to hear. But I'm also interested to find out if there are any new areas that weren't part of the old floodplain.
No.
Okay, so that, my question obviously is because is that gonna impact someone who doesn't know? Okay, good to hear.
Yeah, so we I we looked at this, because so I I went to a similar situation back in my old place, and there was a lot of folks that actually had impacts. Uh we don't have that here, so that's why we're not going through with a much more robust um outreach to folks. So everything's staying within essentially the same lots. I didn't see any additional lots that are being added in. Um and uh, you know, some of the floodway, which is kind of a more stringent uh re- restrictive area. Within the floodplain shrunk significantly as well, especially leaving um Lake Quinapawak, that whole wetland that's uh kind of. Between the the hot, the um between Vern Street and um in Lowell, so.
Right.
Yeah, my, everything really shrunk down.
So that was my big question, and just another uh one comment about, I guess it's a question as well. Um will you be presenting this at town meeting? And if you are, could you put that as a bullet point that? You're saying, but it's also not adding any new?
Yeah, I'll give some examples and sh- have a couple of slides here and there. For sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback.
Uh Mister Noel?
Yeah, um uh is there a a layman's explanation for why uh FEMA reduced these areas?
Um based on the the modeling, hydraulic modeling. So they went through and modeled the whole the whole county, so. Um you know, they also have updated um survey data, so they went through and they did full LIDAR survey. Of the whole county, so they have better topo information too. So when we were looking at the older maps, if you go back to say the nineties maps. That survey was was um, you know, based on much uh less accurate information. So they've received additional information from survey, and then they've also done the updated hydraulics. Um, you know, ob- obviously looking at even more intense storms, and it still um didn't increase the 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 spread of the floodplain.
So the the FEMA modeling did anticipate greater storms, more more intensity, uh. Gotta, 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 okay.
All that stuff, yeah.
Thank you.
And yeah, I have a question too. So Bill, have you seen the actual? Flood maps? Because on a couple of jobs.
We have drafts right now, yeah, I I don't have the final.
Yes.
They haven't submitted it to us. Yeah, that's why I added this map as the, so we have the, what they've, they've said will be the final maps. Um as a as a draft, so we've taken the layers from their models, um and that's what we've thrown into our GIS. And that's what you're seeing here in this map, so this is the extent of all of the of the flood zones.
Alright, so you saw basically the graphic of of where they believe it is, but you haven't seen the elevations at on these, correct?
Uh the map that they have is the drafts have elevations. They essentially look like the the regular uh FEMA map. It's just not the final version.
So they have the transects and 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 at what point? So they have the transects and, and, and at what point, um, what elevation these flood at? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, all that information's in there, yeah.
Because ironically, we're getting at, at, at my office, we're getting asked to, to add the new flood data, yet you can't find it anywhere because it's not published yet. There's, there's the, the map change center where you, they give a graphic of where it is, but
So there is a, if you want to hit me offline on that, I can give you a hand to get you access to it.
Okay.
Yeah, you gotta go, you actually gotta go through the folks at FEMA at the federal level to get access to their map repository and all the information in the background. So that has all the, the, the actual um, HECRAS models, it has all that stuff. Um, and it has the limits and the spread of the actual um, of the actual floodplain.
Alright.
So in that case, Mr. Renault, if this is, if the map that we're looking at right now is based on a series of drafts, do, do we, do we have a, but they've also told us we have to be in compliance by July. So when are they anticipating finalizing? You know, their maps on their side?
The effect, the effective map date is July eighth, so I, you know, I would assume, so it's a lot, this, this round has been different. So I've done this, you know, uh, back in the, in the tens, um, in my other place. And we were given a year, so we had the maps in hand and we had a full year to, to comply. This has been very, very short turnaround time. They really gave us no notice that it was coming, aside from you know, uh, a draft of the model bylaw, letting us know that this thing will be coming down the pipeline. And then the letter came in January saying you have to comply by July, which is very short timeframe, just in the.
Especially given if they're not going to give you the actual map, like if you're a draft map.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, I don't, they're not going to be making changes at this point. So the way the process works is, I mean, this has been going on, like I said, since probably twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, somewhere in that, twenty twenty. All back then, where they had the models that came to the communities, we all looked at it, looked at potential issues with it. Um, comments went back, that was all, some of those were done by my predecessor um, as well. So this is a long time coming for this, these maps. So it's not really new, new data. If you want to look at it that way, but they haven't provided us the final, just the final maps, but um, we're, this, this map is the, essentially the limit of what we have to, what we have to um, regulate.
Understood, okay.
And, and I, I see that the bylaw actually refers to the elevations as established shown on, on the new map. So just because you, they show an elevation out in the field until you establish that, the extent of that is not known, so which is catches up a lot of people when they, when they actually have a survey done and find out where that hundred and one elevation falls.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and so this now, so now basically any work that touches the floodplain or this overlay district would be required now for, well, it already was required for a special permit. So we just got tightened up what that process would be. Again, it already goes to the Conservation Commission anyway, so there's a whole set of standards on that end. Um, the, the federal standards are, are looser than the Massachusetts standards, um, through the Wetland Protection Act anyway. Um, but ultimately, we're e- essentially requiring, you know, hydraulic model if there's no information, that type of stuff. Um, just to be included because it wasn't in our, our current bylaw, so that's really the only change that I made to the bylaw, aside from the mandated um, language that they had.
And, and at a minimum, this map will be helpful for ADUs because you can graphically see that where you're proposing an ADU is definitely within a established flood zone per
Yeah.
town maps.
So that would trigger a special permit application as opposed to just the byright.
Okay, uh, any other members of the board have any other questions or comments? Um, I don't think we've opened up to the public, so any members of the public have any questions or comments? Again, please raise your hand if you, if you do so. Seeing none, I'll move on. Uh, any members of the board have any additional comments or concerns or want to, to make a motion? Uh, before we do that, I think, uh, I see, uh, Eleanor, you've raised your hand.
I apologize, I was slow in, in raising my hand. I just, um, Bill, I just wanted to make sure is this going to be, um, sorry, with the, the floodplain, this area that's blue will be the new floodplain district?
That's the, this is the district, yeah. So this is the limit of the A and AE zone within the um, within the, the new floodmaps.
Okay, because it's just all one color. So is it just along the Saugus River? Or is it?
No, it's Saugus, it's um, the Mill River as well. Yeah, we got all, yeah, they're, they're in different sections. We have some isolated locations down by, by Melrose as well.
Okay.
All of these were essentially, all the sections are on the older maps. They just, you know, like I said, updated survey tightened some of this up. The studies that they did determine what those elevations are, how much flow is coming through, some of that reduced as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
That's it.
Thank you. Uh, any other members of the Planning Board have any other comments, questions, or and/or would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on the floodplain overlay district as, in, in bylaw as presented.
Motion by Matt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, we'll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And yes for myself as well. So the, the, uh, Planning Board has voted favorable action on the floodplain overlay district.
Great folks, thank you very much. Good seeing you all.
Thank you. Good seeing you as well. So that, I'll close item number five and go to item number six. Uh, so Sam, I, 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 can you maybe comment on this? I understand this has been withdrawn by the petitioner.
Yes, so that particular um, citizen's petition that was going forward on the warrant, the marijuana enterprise overlay district at this point has received a um, withdrawal of their petition, like we've received all the signatures, so it will not be heard or discussed or voted on or included in the warrant.
So at this point, there's no action for this board to take regarding this particular overlay district?
Correct, you did have a notice public hearing, so um, you're more than welcome to take comment. But there isn't any action that the board has to take in regard to the public hearing on this particular item.
Okay, uh, with that, with that be, being the case, uh, I'm more than happy to open up to any members of the public who wish to have any comments on the overlay district that has been withdrawn. Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, in that case, unless any other members of the board have any other comments? Uh, I see Julie has raised her hand.
Just one quick um, suggestion. If this is to come up again, and if it's going to be in the same area, I do um, respectfully request that um, the town reaches out to the town of Linfield. They have um, even stricter rules about this issue than we do. And in the past, we haven't reached out to them. So in, to be neighborly, and I believe I emailed the Planning Board about this, and I hope you shared it with each other in the future. Let's um, reach out to Linfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the Planning Board? Seeing none, then I think unless, I'm correct or wrong, I don't think we need a vote to close a public meeting, right? We can just close it. Okay, so in that case, uh, I, I will fully can proceed to close the public hearing associated with this and uh, move on to item number seven. Uh, which I booked, is a um, one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street uh, public hearing, which the um, that public hearing, I believe, um, was requested by the applicant to be continued to a future date. Uh, I believe. Attorney Green McGrath hopped off. Um, I don't think there's any action that we need to take at this time. Right, Sam? I'm trying to find my notes on this one.
Yeah, um, the date that was requested in the letter is a continuation to May thirteenth. There's a letter dated three seventeen um, from Attorney McGrath.
And I believe we do need a vote in order to continue it to that date, right? Instead of So, uh, Attorney McGrath, uh, and I had, uh, gone back and forth previously, uh, when we had all the other planning, uh, other public meetings on the docket and based on, um, I don't think the, the applicant was going to quite be ready. So he and I had discussed, uh, con- continuation and uh, they pushed for a May thirteenth twenty twenty-five public hearing continuance. So, um, does any member of the board have any comments or concerns related to that? Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize that, Attorney McGrath, I didn't realize you're, you're, uh, you're still on. I thought you had dropped off.
Well, that's fine, that's a request. I just restate my letter. We've requested a, a, a continuance until that date. And uh, we've already extended, I think, into August, so there's plenty of time for the board at this point.
Yep.
So, request a vote to continue the public hearing until that date, Mr. Chair.
In that case, uh, does any member of the Planning Board have any, any uh, comments, concerns, and/or uh, motions of the?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing regarding one fifty-four to one fifty-eight Salem Street to be continued to May thirteenth.
Okay, uh, motion by Theo, do I hear a second?
I have a quick question on the motion. Oh, go ahead, let me watch the second it.
Go, go ahead and ask a question first.
Do we have to second it before we can ask a question?
Well, second it.
Thank you. Um, do we have to extend the date for any reason? Meaning are we coming up against any type of deadlines?
It's, it's in August, we've extended it to.
We've extended it to August, so we're all set. Okay, that's the question. I was writing some notes down, I'm sorry if I missed that.
Yep, so I think motion by, I think it was, was a motion by Matt and seconded by Theo?
Other way around.
Oh, sorry, motion by Theo, seconded by Matt, so, uh, Bill?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Uh, Matt?
Yes.
And Theo?
Yes.
Yes, uh, for me as well. So we are, have a, uh, accepted the, the requested continuance of the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision public hearing to the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Uh, so with all that, I'll move it over to close item number seven, and move over to item number eight, Planner Update. So Sam?
Hey, the only item I have to update you on is the Housing Production Plan has two forums coming up. Um, the ninth is a hybrid meeting at six PM at the Senior Center. Um, we prefer people to be there in person if you're capable, and then there is another meeting on the sixteenth, which is entirely virtual. And they will be going over the same thing. They're just giving people mo- multiple opportunities in order to comment.
I think the website says five to six PM, is that?
I will review that.
Okay. Um, and as a member of the, the Housing Production Plan, um, it would be uh, really fantastic for, uh, uh, to get as much public participation as we can. In, in bo- in both events, the, the ninth and sixteen.
Okay, anything else from, for, uh, for Sam? Okay, I'll move on to item number eight, item is not anticipated by the Chair. Uh, so first thing, I, I do want to start by, uh, asking, uh, Kevin for update as it relates to the bylaw review committee. I might understand that there was a meeting, uh, uh, prior, between the last time we met and today?
Yeah, we had a meeting last night, actually. Um, no real substantive uh, updates at this point. We didn't discuss any zoning uh, updates at last night's meeting.
I, do we, is there any anticipated additional feedback that the bylaw review committee is anticipating that we're going to need for the recodification effort?
I think eventually they would like the board to review at least one more time the zoning bylaw updates. Um, but we're aiming for fall for those at this point. Um, though hoping to have everything in place well before then.
Yeah. Yeah, just please keep us advised. I, I definitely would like to make sure we have the ability to have with ample opportunity to review that last set based on the number of comments that we had last time and the back and forth.
Definitely.
Okay, um, the next item not anticipated I have is, um, so as, uh, folks may recall, uh, Matt has been serving on behalf of the Planning Board on the uh, Housing Trust, and uh, Matt is not standing for reelection. And so we need to uh, identify a member of the Planning Board to act as a replacement for that Housing Trust representation, uh, on behalf of the Planning Board. So what I'd do, maybe Matt, can you maybe just give an update as it relates to the Housing Trust, the, what's been um, your role on that body to date, and then we can figure out who would be an appropriate replacement. I, I understand from talking to, uh, from notification from Town Council that we need to nominate someone, uh, at this meeting in order to make sure there's continuity of someone in that seat.
Um, yeah, so basically the Housing Trust now is in the role of, um, approving any upper disbursement funds that are associated with that, so, um, I believe as the applications come in for uh, rental assistance, the Chair right now vets them and then the overall, um, trust approves them at, at each meeting. So just to formal, as a formality, and, um, they have started looking at some reuse options potentially in places to, um, to look at getting some housing going, so. Um, besides that, it is really, at this point, there's really not a heavy lift on that, on that board, so.
And can you remind everyone how often that, that meeting cadences?
It's roughly once a month or so.
Through the Chair, um, when there's larger projects that are working on, which Matt was talking about with the RAP, which is the Wakefield Rental Assistance Program, when that was getting off the ground, it was once a month. Um, with the Housing Production Plan being finalized and then some kind of um, marching orders kind of given to the Housing Trust, there may be more meetings. Um, but generally speaking, it's a minimum required of, I believe, once a quarter. And then they only need, they, they may meet additionally as needed.
So do any other members of the board have, uh, any questions for Matt as it relates to that, if, uh, as you're evaluating potentially stepping into that role?
Um, are there, the, it does, what, what is the, the, sort of the full scope uh, or the opportunity of the Hou- the Housing Trust? I mean, it's the rental assistance, um, uh, are they able to, to buy property and, um, what, yeah? What, what other, other, uh, activities have been considered or are anticipated?
There, there's, uh, some money that the town has from some forty B projects. Um, so there is some money that they've been looking at, trying the best ways to, to u- utilize that. Uh, unfortunately, there's really not enough money to do too much. So as that gets built up over time, there may be enough to do something, but with the cost of housing right now, there's, there's not a huge opportunity. It's not like we have millions of dollars in there. Um, Sam, I, it was like seven hundred fifty thousand, maybe something like that?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's over seven hundred thousand dollars, and there's another unit, um, at least one unit that we know that may be foreclosed on, which is how we got the funds in the first place. So when a uh, unit, an ownership unit that's listed on the subsidized housing inventory gets foreclosed on, the way that the deed writer has written is that any funds between the affordable, um, determined market rate and actual sale price, um, if it hasn't been sold to an affordable owner, potential, you know, meeting the criteria of affordability, um, that difference doesn't go to the bank in a foreclosure or in a market rate sale. It goes back to the town and is to be utilized by the Affordable Housing Trust. So there's two hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds, which are being currently used for the Wakefield Renters Assistance Program, which is covering um, kind of a gap program or a gap in the, the rental needs, um, where it covers rental deposits, utility deposits and or moving expenses paid directly to the companies. So no money is going, um, to the tenant themselves. And it's a one-time grant of up to five thousand dollars. And then there's, um, so that's being overseen by the trust right now. And then the ARPA reports are also reviewed by the trust, uh, quarter. And then the ARPA reports are also reviewed by the trust, uh, quarterly and being, that's, that's why there's the quarterly mandated minimum meetings. Um, and those are being, again, sent to whoever's overseeing ARPA, the, the feds. Um, and then there's the potential of looking at some other programs, so. You could create, um, the, the trust could end up looking at, um. Uh, having additional funds available for ownership or for rental, um, or utilizing those to offset some of the. Um, hard or soft costs for development of an affordable housing project or partnering with Habitat for Humanity. There's a lot of different potential avenues. Um, the last, most of the last meetings, um, when there was conversation about where they could go with those funds. Um, they, the, the trust as a whole ended up deciding to wait until the Housing Production Plan. Had kind of given them a better outlook, um, because the previous Housing Production Plan expired in twenty twenty. And those criteria are the goals and objectives for that housing production plan were set in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen. Um, it was published in twenty, or, um, accepted by the state in twenty fifteen, so they're fairly outdated. So from twenty twelve to twenty fourteen. To now twenty twenty-five, there's, you know, a lot has changed, um. In the housing affordability world and of what's available. And also Wakefield has done a lot to increase through, um, inclusionary zoning. Um, there's also potential down the road to look at other zoning mechanisms to encourage additional affordable units, um, to encourage. Uh, the town to potentially look at some, um, property tax, cuz there's some, some property tax incentives you can do for affordable units. There's a whole heap of potential things, but again, the Housing Production Plan will give, um, some semblance of marching order. Just kind of some goals and objectives for the housing trust to look at over the next five years, five to ten years.
And, yeah.
I would also say, one of the, the, the things that. Has been decided on, which is maybe a good benefit, maybe not, is that the meetings have been trying to schedule them around like five o'clock at night. Which, um, that may, may not fit in your schedule depending on how you work, so just be aware of that.
Yeah, they're typ- they're typically on Wednesdays at, at five or six P M.
Uh, so with that being said, any, uh, anyone have a, uh, strong desire to be the planning board representative for? The housing trust?
Um, it sounds like a great opportunity and a low lift, but, um, it really does build nicely off of the Housing Production Plan work. And I think it is a nice, uh, another venue for, uh, advocacy and communication. And just helping, I think, to continue sort of education around all of the, the issues that affect. Uh, housing and affordability, um, and, uh, and livability within Wakefield. Um, like all, all of the same conversations that came up around, uh, MBTA communities and even with. The ADU discussions, um, so, so that, that's really welcome, um, uh. The, uh, the, the tough spot is, I know the bylaw work is continuing, um, I don't know, um. I think the, the board itself would really benefit from, uh, technical knowledge, you know, Jim or Bill. You know, so I don't know if either of you are particularly interested or, um.
Honestly, Theo, I think you're the perfect person for it.
See, you do this.
Your experience.
All right, throwing me to the wolves, um. Yeah, um, um, I would, uh, I would find it very fulfilling, so, but, um. But I, I, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Theo, what I would communicate is, I, I'm, I do have an interest in it, but at the same time, um. I think that what Bill said, it holds a lot of merit, and I think that that's a really good aligning of where your background in. Your day job as well as, um, as well, and I know that you were, you were interested in it when this first came up, so. If you're still interested in it, I think that you'd be a great representative of the board, um, but if not, then that's something I'd be willing to, to consider as well.
Uh, happy to do it. I mean, your, your chairmanship is, you know, uh. Uh, your, your time is opening up, but, uh, I, but I, so I would defer to you, um, uh, but I'm also again interested.
Um, so, I, I would, I would suggest that, Theo, if you're interested, that we, we have you, you slot in there. And then, um, and then we can, we can make any adjustments next year when this, when it rolls over.
Very good. Well, I have a quick question. This is something that we can change anytime, if we.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Honestly, if, I think it'd probably be appropriate, depending on what we, the series of decisions we make after the election, to make a change depending on, if, you know. Who ends up becoming the next chair.
Okay, all right, fair enough, sure.
So I think what we'll do is I'll, I'll let the, I'll let Sherry know that we're, um, we're nominating you, Theo, for, for now, and then if we make any changes on a go-forward basis, we can do that.
All right.
So that leads to my, to actually my next, one of my, uh, one of the other items I have on my list is, uh, I wanna encourage all the members of the board. Um, I think Bill made an allusion to it, but, uh, we do have the election coming up. Uh, and so the first meeting after the election, we will be, uh, appointing or agreeing upon a new chair and vice chair. So just if folks are interested, um, in, in either one of those positions, um, just put some thought into it. And, um, and then we can try to figure out what, what makes the most sense, uh, for the board on a go-forward basis. So we, we don't have to make any decisions right now, um, but just let folks know where I'm at, you know, I'm more than happy to, to do a double duty similar to what Theo did. If it, if it's needed to, if no one else is interested, but, um, we can, we can have that conversation in a more full conversation, full manner. Uh, after we get the new, uh, board member on board. Um, and then the last thing I have on my list is the, um, one ninety-seven to hunt, so, uh, Bill, uh, put together that letter. So I was able to review it, and so thank you for that, and I don't think I have any comments. I think I do agree. That, um, I think it would be appropriate for us to execute that and issue it to both, uh, Bill and, uh, Ben D. Christophero. In IST or the, the building department, rather, so, um, well, that, the, the wheels are in motion on that, just to give the board an update. I anticipate that will get signed, um, within the next, by the end of the week.
Okay, and, uh, Jim, I just wanted to make a comment on that, too. I added in the last line that, um. We can have a board member available to visit the site, and I, I'd more than be happy to be that board member to go out if. Accompanied by, if a member of the, or a person in the engineering department or building inspectional services wants to. Visit.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, uh, so those are all the lists. I, I saw, I took up a lot of time on that one, but, uh, does anyone else have any other items that they wanted to bring as an item not anticipated by? Anticipated by the chair?
I, I just wanna make a comment about, um, the next meeting coming up, so we will plan a meeting for April fifteenth, was, oh, was that correct?
Yep.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure that's gonna happen, so that's.
A week from today.
Week from today, that's good. Something else is due that day, I can't remember. Taxes, yeah.
Yeah, 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 you're not done? Me neither.
And I just wanted to point out, I s- I still have the Mylar, I need to, we need to get it to Theo. Um, so I know, Sam, you were looking for that, that it, it's here and Theo, we can coordinate and I can get it over to you or. Or you can come over here, whatever works for you.
Okay.
Is that the last signature with, this Theo's?
Yeah, but, yeah, um. Uh, I can, yeah, we'll, we'll coordinate tomorrow. I, I should be able to, to pick it up and, um. Figure out how to get it to, uh, Sam tomorrow evening.
Do you want me to pick it up from you, Matt? I can pick it up tonight and bring it to the town hall, or I can just bring it to Theo.
Um.
Do you, um, could you bring it to the, the HPP meeting tomorrow?
Uh, no.
All right.
If you, if you give it to me, I can take it to the Housing Production Plan meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, I can grab it from Matt.
Okay.
To the town hall.
Yep, I've got a full regular day, um, but I'll be leaving probably about three thirty, four o'clock to head over to the senior center.
Okay, I'm here at eight.
Okay.
All right, you gonna swing by tonight, Susan?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll walk home and just get my car and come down.
All right. It'll.
Put it in mailbox if you want.
Yeah, all right, sounds good.
And so the only thing on the April fifteenth agenda will be the ADU zoning amendment, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, cuz I have to post that tomorrow, latest Thursday.
Yeah, I think you could just post it based on having that, and then I, I did not call order, approval of minutes. That item for the ADU and then items not anticipated and call good.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Okay. Anything else, uh, items under not anticipated?
Sure, um, uh, I know it's been referenced a, a couple of times, but, um, can we give. Uh, Matt a round of applause, uh, to thank you.
It's not his last meeting, we have to wait.
Oh, that's right. Oh, good, fine, never mind, forget it, make him work for it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, there we go, motion to adjourn for Matt, do I hear a second? Uh, motion by Matt, uh, seconded by Bill, Kevin?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
And, uh, Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, everyone, for, uh, for the meeting, and, uh, we'll see you in a week.
Thank you.
All right.
Bye.